I believe you have the right, it's past seven o'clock now, so we're going to make a start. So following to that for the council. We will start, we are in a full agenda today, we're trying to get through this much. Thank you for all the attendance today, appreciate it. And let's go forward to our joint event, our agenda is then apologies for that.
There's apologies from Chris Harvey, Terry Land, Mac McDonald, Hazel Cambridge, Frank Peters, Viola Smith and Juan Wood.
Thank you. And Councilor Jefferson as well.
Councilor Jefferson, yes. Councilor Mitchell.
I will call him each other. Okay, what have I done? Thank you. So sixty five twenty five is the version of an individual school in your interest to declare now for the representative agenda. For example, if you're bringing my statement as a possible agenda items, certainly. And thank you. Moving on, and sixty six twenty five, following participation. So I'm taking comments or questions from the from the public. Do please know that questions should be directed to the councils, the local council councils only. And that's because when you make the break on the state council or the Northern County Council, which should be basically those respective institutions for the break one or two. So is there any questions from the public at least? No? Yes, sir.
Well, I would say this is a very powerful issue, but apparently the town should have some influence on it. Certainly it's about Mark or third and one hour. Now, the ceiling is changed, we can use the face, we can see the lot is moving on really. It's thirty nine. So the more mark you put, like those who provide the fact.
All right, do you think?
Um, probably there'll be at least six more marks on the road.
Oh, yes. Most. Is there any more questions from the public today, please? Yes, sir.
Yeah, first of all, it's just it's just a short question, then a question, okay? Man, thanks for your email. I agree with everything you wrote in it environmentally, looking after our world and great. But you still haven't provided me any evidence of a climate emergency. You know, just leave that there, okay? And Blackpool, yours yours was the best, really interesting. You said I was talking about sixty years out of day data. You obviously didn't listen to what I said. I said in the sixties, I said it was going to run out of oil in ten years. And to believe that we're going to put taxes up. We never ran out of oil in ten years, but they never put the taxes down again. That's that point. The only point I want to address yourself is is that in your email advancement, which I do appreciate, you said there are very well qualified scientists who are councillors who spoke with conviction during the debate. Can I have the name of that scientist, please? Because I've obviously been talking to the wrong people.
Um, do you want to apply?
The, no, I'm not going to give you the names of councillors, because you can look up who people are. The town council, and then you can look up on the town council website.
So you won't give the name of the scientist that spoke with conviction that made you declare your climate.
As I said in my email, yes, I do. It's like, no, please don't interrupt. As I said in my email, there are people on the town council who are better qualified scientists than you. And that we listen to them, okay? And you're just saying about your sixty years out of day, the ninety sixty years ago, so it sounds.
And sixteen years ago, they said we was going to run out of oil. What are you driving your cars around in?
So.
So can I have the name of this scientist?
I appreciate that you have someone else, but is that a specific question that otherwise we're connecting?
Yeah, I did. I said, can I have the name of the scientist that you relied on?
I mean, he should take your, such a world, my name.
And that's councillor for Hull, for that scientist, I mean, but he's, you can email it to me, I'm not desperate tonight. But I'm obviously speaking to the wrong people.
If there's a new, many specific person that got in contact with you, then it's up to them, then up to the council to come up with that information, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, can I ask you then for the name of the scientist that you relied on to declare your climate emergency?
We do need one of these scientists, it is a cause, it is available by the council, that information is probably domain, unfortunately.
They said that the very well qualified scientist who spoke with conviction, that's a statement.
I don't understand whoever gave that statement, so I'll give you the information from what I can tell you. The ideas were brought by council, the public domain, it can be consulted on the town council website, the domain.
Can you guide me towards that then? Can you email me the the dates and everything that happened?
Tell when those decisions were made on council minutes, they are home domain, so that we talk. I can ask the government to produce that specific information, if you'd like, okay? Thank you. Why, any more questions please, only one more on that.
Yeah, I just need to make the council aware, now mine wants me to bring this thing. And the council council aware of what I'm going to say. On the four year, there's a lot of frustration in the town, and I thought this was the last two weekends. We've got ten collectors going around to the doors threatening people who can't afford to pay for their insurance. And the police are coming, and the police are getting involved in legal action when there's no criminal activity. And the change in all the people that are trying to get in here to speak to the councillors about it. And the councillors don't listen. So that is why you've got a lot of frustration on the side of the minute. But I don't think we've had two more, I lost this, but as we got into, and called the police, getting involved in legal matters, which have got nothing to do with them. Majority of it is about council tax. Now, there is, there's a case in the calls at the minute called the late case, where the police have been beaten. And they've been told that nine would have civil actions taken against them, but back on the debt collectors over the collection money for the council tax. So I want you to be aware and do some research on the late case, because that will come to the fore in this town over the next few months. So nine policemen are going to be taken civilly to court for that case.
Your customers are noted, and you did raise a significant work in. Sorry, can you hear me better now? Is the matter better? With all my people, sorry about that. Yes, I was just thinking, last week, we know the concerns, because you did raise some similar concerns on previous meetings here. We still have under the remit that this is actions taken by the district council. Is this not from the Tashford Town Council? We do not have people knocking on doors, and we do not issue those deals or those debts. There is no midnight revenge for decision.
Anyway, my son, if.
You got the meeting, that is, you might have gone for your, so if you want, Mr Taylor, I'll give you one more then. Any other questions, please?
The town councillors have got to make the district councillors aware. Now, I know some of you do represent the district, so you've got to listen to what I'm saying. Are you aware that every level of council is a prime incorporation? That all prime corporations are a garden of the public and fully with menace. And there's a lot of friction on the streets. You not writing as councillors, got to do some research. Find out what actually goes on, you represent the, because we can't have the police coming running back at late four. And we can't have folks coming to the doors of the attacking residents demanding what we that they haven't got. And the council is sitting here, you're nothing. So do some research, speak to Breckham, and find out what's going on. Can you do that, please?
Then, simply ask all the questions. Have you raised this concern with Breckham Council and the institutions outside ourselves?
Absolutely. We can hear the issues if you don't have a problem.
And because that's why the way this council agrees is that, of course, once our power is not for her to pick forth, we have to deliberately carry matters of the town council, not necessarily the matters of Breckham council, because it's not within our power or even to do so.
So you say that three councillors are going to get.
I didn't say that they would get involved, they can get involved if they wish to get involved in personal capacities, tell the council. It is not our obligation to take on measures that belong to other council members. That is wrong.
I need you to find out all these three levels of council corporations that registered in London Bratsby's and basically demanding what they with menace. And people are starting to wake up for him. We're going to have a lot of trouble in the town organization in the future. Please do your research.
No, I'm seeing it, thank you. Anyone question?
Yeah, one of the meetings, the councillor in the middle of the rain, called Cream Top, on his phone. When I asked about questions, he said that he wouldn't know all the questions, that he wouldn't know what he asks us, because he wouldn't know the questions, and I can go with that. Right? But now we got a new man. I would have thought two questions tonight. Surely you lot are able to answer some of the questions. Maybe it's because you're not ordered enough. Maybe you're not good enough, all right? Let me finish.
I said I've replied.
Yeah, I know, but you spent ten minutes on your phone, not listening to me. Listen to me.
So. It's your last one.
Thanks, all right? So surely some of the councillors here should be able to answer some questions, even if we don't like them, you don't answer. Now, I thought maybe with a new man, it may change, but it hasn't. But then again, you haven't got a lot to live up to, did you? You haven't. You haven't got a lot to live up to, you haven't. The last man didn't do nothing.
Is that a question, sir?
I'm just telling you what I think.
Anything on?
Yeah, anything.
Answer the one. I did two things, but first thing, my name is Matt, Chris, be mine. The future, second, my agenda is on my phone, I take notes of what people are asking, so don't worry why I'm on my phone. Don't stir it up there. So my agenda is on my phone, that's why I'm. Do I have on my phone? Probably right. And to answer your question, that's actually not what I said. What I said was, I'm not going to answer a question, I've springed off tools with no context, but I don't believe. Yeah, can I have your question? What's the name of the person? Give me nine, the medical question.
That's not me, that's me.
That's my name. Thank you, I'm just entering on that on top of the head. What have I got? I'll give you anything.
Oh, leaving there. Oh, leaving. Oh, oh, yeah, here again. There's a man, he's not speaking at the moment, but he wants to talk. I want to.
Sorry.
James, I'm not, those are people here. First, we cannot play more and talk more of you.
I do not know the answer to certain questions, that you won't believe, because he is not my people, I don't know about it. I'm medically trained and I worked in China. I feel like you're not going to drop that, give you answers. Same with teaching, same with the morality of things here. If you want me to know something in advance, our emails or the website, email it. I didn't, I didn't like the ball. It's the question, email me what. I just.
We will.
The email was very good. So you have thoughts, you have a bit of a, email. And I was going to threaten you on me, you know, that's how you see it now. What's wrong with that?
Um.
Good luck.
Oh, dear, oh, dear.
Which one, we can't get each other, so please, one after one.
You're working the law, sir.
Yeah, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Well, it's like, you know.
You're only ever, man, you're all so much fun.
Thank you for Googling. Thank you for Googling.
We need to move on with the agenda, we do have a lot to discuss today. So thank you very much for your questions. Moving along, on the start of the agenda, that we look quite quite a bit today. So sixty seven twenty five, the minutes from the previous meeting, which was May nineteenth, and fourteen minutes. And to confirm those distribute records in Sunday. How we confirm the meetings from the previous. One, great, thanks.
Oh, I'm personally kind. Thank you. I'm just trying to. Something finger, if you want to look. No, Matt, it won't. It's not me like that. Should we have a drink, Captain?
One, sixty eight twenty five, town council, which is a lot of boys in the street, the county council, so. That will be us, and council audience, council team, James, do I have a question?
Thanks, man, there. Um, sat here, hopefully everybody can hear it. I've never been accused of being quiet, so firstly, absolutely in response to your question. Is you even looking for the boss, having noticed something like it? I think working with the town council team, we do have a studio community, boy, they're beside the sound. But aside, it's going to be really difficult to use my sound, so they gather it as the wellness, the more random, in fact, I am sending this to the graph. Obviously, councillor Jeremy and myself, the bros, they, hardship is got the existing ones and don't. Here and see where, wherever else for me, I'm just wanting to, we did not, I don't know, we've got a chance to not be in a situation bad. So I've been, I don't see, I guess, again. Hopefully, we'll get it. So we worked together on that, honestly, then. So further to my last one, what's that, town council back in April? I'm pleased to advise that the final repairs are round back by the marketplace, and we're currently completing with the right flints. And white line and slow road markings have been installed around bridges. There is additional signage to go in there, and that should hopefully be done by the end of July. Additionally, this week we'll see the continuation of surface work along Ring Main, getting rid of those bumpy bits that we experienced along the work there. The works at last week's End Green Lane are being funded by my members' highway to land, which I've also used previously for drop first to our town centre, and my earlier service work on Ring Main. And most recently, supporting the garage road business association, purchasing some glorious new containers for their bag of planting, which I know will hopefully be embedded in Bloom. Teflon Library, they have been pushing, I have been pushing again to get those sweet sources out. I'm really pleased to say we've got good communication happening, hopefully, along with some of your volunteers, we will be able to get an entry and inclusion in Teflon Bloom for next year, so making our town centre better for everyone. At the last meeting, I'm trying to pick up everything I do get nearby with councillor, like, great, around the issue of the myriad of different lighting laws around the marketplace area. With my highways, there's no, there is a walkabout, and always an updating plan. I'm really pleased to see now that we've got real time bus information streams, and that the bus interchange, and that's been funded through something that's called Bizit, which is the Bus Service Improvement Plan. Rather excitingly, Northford County Council has approved a launch for a new £5 million mortgage community fund for the twenty five twenty six year. That's aimed at supporting grassroots projects that strengthen communities and improve the local wellbeing. The funds is there to empower the voluntary, community and social enterprise groups to acquire grants to be £200 and £2,500 to deliver small scale initiatives that bring people together, promote inclusion and enhance quality of life. For reference, each of the county's eighty four counters will be allocated £5,000 to distribute women and children. That's ensuring funding reaches every corner of the, but frankly, we're only interested there. So between myself and Capsebit, please do reach out, and please do make your residents aware, reach out into your communities, and share that good news with them. It will also encourage match funding, much as your town council does around the world, through county funding, which obviously helps potentially increase the impact. Twenty five twenty six programme prioritized projects for aging well, youth engagement, community cohesion and health connection. So please do get in touch, probably likely, we've got a list of about ten organizations that at least already look of benefit from that. More support that the Teflon Control Home comes in the form of the Lonal Market Town Grant, the Pride of Place funding. Applications are welcome for local groups and businesses, and that project must be a new idea, which supports multiple areas or services within a local area. There's no restrictions to the kind of activities that can be funded, but the ideas must have a link to creating interest or increasing footballs in our town centre, much like our board displayed in twenty two. The Lonal Market Town Grant team is to part fund and fully fund projects that will have a project cost to be met on our local high streets. It can fund past 20% of project costs and the maximum reward is £5,000, minimum being £1,000. So deadline for that is thirty first of August, and I can't say last year's funding, but for here in Teflon, the creation of self riding and being proud maps and current wide use of local shops and office, five terms, and that's from December last year through September mid-year. And I have to say, as a former high street vendor retailer, I loved working those types of things, it really did encourage footballing. And the buzz that came with them was right apart, so please do join in with them, because the next trail, number three in the fantastic series Back in Time, will be running from the end of July to the end of August to cover the school holidays. Then we've got Ghost Effect at the Park, and then the final trail, Santa's Lost Presence throughout this centre. Yesterday saw the Northford County Council cabinet review the options of praise of God, relating to local government reorganization. So that's a key subject for you live, and you've had it on your agenda a number of times. Given the information, insights and data that we've had available to us, it looks like a single unit triad royalty would potentially be the best option for the normal community, in our opinion. A variety of aspects were considered through the lenses of giving options, exploring the pros and cons, the risks and needs. All sent in for a fat face review. I'm really pleased that all the documents for all the considerations and yet the pros and the cons, frankly, have been published, so everyone will see exactly what we have considered in choosing that way forward. For reference, a fourth proposal for a single unitary council will now be developed by the county council for supervision to central government in the autumn. Ultimately, it will be their decision. The government is serving residents in the future, but obviously, there will be further consultation, I know both the districts and the county council have had some, and it will continue to happen. Then finally, apologies, I've probably run over my time and hours. My next surgery will be in Teflon Library, Saturday, twelve of July, ten thirty to twelve. Always happy to hear you, and happy to take any questions, should you wish, back on there.
Nothing about your questions. Any questions for council?
Thank you, thank you for your update, Jane, that's really appreciated. And you touched upon the community safety fund, obviously like yours, I'm very pleased to see the new rounders on the floor around town and also on cloverfield specifically. But also wanted to mention the new signage of London Road, the pedestrian crossing, which has gone up as a result of the community safety fund as well. Obviously, it's not my area anymore, but thank you for what you've done to continue to lobby, to make sure that actually felt like a long time coming, but we got there. And hopefully, I'm not sure if the community safety fund is continuing, but there are thermal opportunities to reduce speed, it's an ongoing process. So perhaps if there is a new round of community safety funds, you can have a conversation with the town council about what the opportunities might be.
Thank you. Any more questions, Council James? Thank you very much, Council James. Thank you. Is any more question, when the other councillor looks something at them? Is that still ready?
Thank you. And I'm hoping to give some, an update on the Charles World Centre, and the town council, along with mine. And I was a bit worried about what I could give back, and then I've spoken to Nicola, the centre manager, and she gave us some fantastic news today, which the Charles World Centre were nominated for Teflon Bloom, and Nicola, well, the centre manager, reached out to Charles Well Stud to ask if he liked to donate any remaining plants that were left over from planting season. And then he spent three incredibly large crates full of flowers, which is found in state, and then their head, their head go out and end us, so the shadows. And he sent any groundskeeping equipment that I know of the need, they're more than happy to donate to the charity as well, which is fantastic. And so I really look forward to what the Charles World Centre is going to do for Teflon Bloom.
Any more?
Thank you, man. Just to feedback on the Great Teflon Partnership, I attended two meetings since we last met. One was a specific one that the developers on Kingsfleet came to address us with. The developers talked about the next two phases, I wanted to feedback on that. Councillor Terry and myself attended, and one of the things that we did raise was the street lighting situation, which I know this town council have raised in the past about the light street lighting. And obviously going forward into new phases, how that could be incorporated. We felt, the deputy town clerk attended the meeting, and him and I felt that it would be worthwhile that the developers came and addressed this council in full. And I think that has been now arranged so that we can hear from them. But the point that was raised was that on the existing estate, it's going to be very difficult to retrofit the street lighting, because even if you do, now put the infrastructure, even if you sell it out of light, you still need to earmark the patch of land that will be utilized and how that will be taken forward and maintained. So it would be quite a legal process to do, this is something that can't be done, but obviously, they were given education, it's going to be too difficult for them to do. But obviously, if we are going forward with this street lighting, then we need to get in early on the next phases, so that those things can be earmarked and put together and incorporated in the plan. One of the other things that we did feedback on was the style of the buildings that were being put forward, and the white flints and the character that they had. I know the Hills representatives who will be looking at the Hills and Silent Orange Road didn't feel that. Or my soft edge to the countryside that they had hoped to a village feel. Obviously, from our perspective, I think our aim long term would be that all of the Kingsfleet would come into that this parish at some point. But that's something that I think Hills will be against in the short term, but I think that we'll be mindful of that, just to be that. But obviously, the developers coming allows this town council to have a then look into that, and rather than hearing from the horses, I'm hearing it second hand myself. The second meeting, which, general meeting that we had, again, the developers were there, and they fed back to the board for that, but also they talking about the phasing of the infrastructure and the second one of six monies that are supposed to be coming forward. One of them was earmarked to the number of houses built to free up funding for the ALF injunctions. It's likely that will be no improvement to the ALF junctions for about five years. But I think we need as a community to be aware of that. We can keep pushing that they, that needs to be done, you know, Mumford Road around about, it's a great long, very busy times. And they have took on board that their first priority based on the plan is was going to be the Norwich Road to Road Junction, whereas they are now trying to prioritize the Mumford Road Junction as being the first thing, it's like, obviously, these discussions happen with highways, the highways agency, and Northern County Council have been doing their traffic flow monitoring, and that will feed into the process. But I'm just, in town council, we do get any questions from the public, those junctions are not going to be done before five years, earliest. There was also touching upon the school on Kingsfleet, which we've had discussions about in the past. And again, it's very unlikely to happen in the short term because of the falling roles in schools. But that's well, any further questions, I'm happy to answer, but one of the things I had hoped was going to be discussed was, and I had put in the agenda for the previous meeting, was the sports provision in the town. And unfortunately, that was dropped off the agenda, but we did have a feedback from Joe Pearce, the chair of the neighbourhood board, who had indicated that councillor Peters is chairing up a subcommittee on sports provision as part of the neighbourhood. They asked if we could have, on the Great Teflon Partnership, a presentation from the neighbourhood in respect of that, to try and discuss the light sports provision, bearing in mind the loss of the, the town pitch.
Okay, thank you, Councilor, any questions for this report?
No? Any more representative's on any other boards across the day? No? All right, thank you very much. Moving on then. Seventy one twenty five, and that's the base report, that would be my report now, I would be very succinct, very sure. It's been a busy time since I've been to call since May making my role. I had my predecessor, Green Harvey, doing the day, which was a reorganisation now, and seeing I can work into a few events. I attended a lot of celebrations, because here in Kameki was very successful, I would recommend that quite good, and I'm a wonderful shop, it was a wonderful event. This month, I sent the torment special, especially to love me, the area, the middle room. It was impressive, just to see the amount of young people, it's become more, and it's like we had to compete, and to have a fun, they had, they put on quite an event, and it was really well attended, it's a lot of fun, and may only be continued for a long time, because they do, it's a good process, and we want a job. So during the recovery from the six to years, I made a situation in town, fast resuries, and I did because I was invited on the upper half of council to open a polish street, a path, it was a small street, in one of our areas, and that was called Death's Avenue, and they decided to enter that street, it was part of celebrating those cultural links, and that's well done to many of the residents. One of the things that came from that was very clear, is that from their side, and our from ours as well, is really to wish to continue those cultural links and continue to those exchanges, and maintaining the many association alive. The London Association, per se, has finished, because they lost some of the members, and they want to continue, but I hope for the council and members of the community can come together, they won't fight anybody, they wasn't going to talk to me or other, you know, to the council, about maybe with someone together and continue to some sort of exchanges, whether it's with youth visits, whether it's cultural exchanges, I think it's not only me, it's less we waste the time, I think it's important to celebrate those links and maintaining them. So yes, I turned it out, it was very good, that was a nice, mostly a fragment, also people, many differences there, these options are great. I understand that by creating those situations, and then other divisions of sports have had a place to call home anymore, and that's something that I was sort of a bit sorry for, and I'm hoping to, that I can support the other groups that are trying to connect more sports and opposition down, because it's something I assume with myself as well. But these locations, as they are for that, because they are really more than their excellence provisions, and I'm sure a lot of people are enjoying the vision. So it's a great place to maintain and to keep in touch with all sports. I went, I went into the Larnell Church, I'm in the church, they had a display of flowers, vegetables, and even cakes, where everybody from the Larnell gets together, there's a lot of beautiful flowers, they do a wonderful job, and it's not only about, you know, the price, pricing, and getting awards for the best flower, the best vegetable that they can blend, or come out, is the amount of work that one may give, is to, you know, to create an advantage for, whether it's insects or bees, or just maintaining, bringing in, all the things in production of those plants, and all the work they do for the environment and the wildlife, and they do work, and the job was really nice to tell them to be part of that. It's more than that, just because of this weekend, I'm guilty of the gardens, so I had the opportunity to vote at all different gardens that opened up to the public, to front race for the Oscars. I can say that some places that I'm assuming, we have a small entrance in the little house, ex-mural, you can start to watch the gardens, so they might work in the great gardens, and that's what very impressive, for those that are not in town, that are even for everyone, visitors, that, this year, I always try to carry around, I see them next year, because they are impressive. The volunteers, all the members play a great show, the gardeners are massive, which is a great cause. And even though there was twenty eight participants, twenty eight gardens open, I managed to pop in and to visit all of them, I finished last Monday, shoot the two minutes five o'clock, to be able to go to twenty eight gardens, and try to be present as much as I could in all of them, and I have to say, I didn't talk to the gardens in one day, it was hard work, it was well worked, because that's a lot of people, and they deserve, it's certainly a recognition. And I think for now, that's all, so. That's very generally, anyone, anyone on the solutions from my report, my events, will be to ask, no? Okay, seventy one twenty five, town report, thank you, thank you, madam mayor.
I've made some small changes to the town report, and I've now linked it to the unlocking Fethford potential document, which was previously agreed by council when they first were appointed. This connection helps to demonstrate the work being carried out to bring the plan to life, and shows how this council is delivering on the commitments set out within it. Any questions that anyone would like to ask?
Any questions, councilor?
Less question, more thank you, all the hard work I do, I know you have a team around you, but presenting us with the report, what you've been doing lately, it's phenomenal, to see exactly how much you do with your great colleagues, but how much you do, and what you do for this town, so again, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Seventy one twenty five, progress and actions from previous meeting, and our person for talking again.
Can you go down the action, please?
For someone?
Maybe do that. This is something that we implemented, it's just to show all the actions that we're working on and how we're progressing, and once they've been completed and council realise they've been completed, we then take them off and put them on completed section, which you won't see, it's just to give a council an idea of everything that we're working on that's come out from resolutions that councils have made.
Any questions on the report? Thank you. Seventy one twenty five. Sorry, just hit that one, we just done that one. So seventy to twenty five, confirmation appointment of the responsible financial officer, the RFO, so. Okay. On the twenty seventh of May, corporate services agreed to appoint our deputy town clerk as the responsible finance officer. By seven AM, and the RFO for the town clerk, we reduce the risk of a single point of failure. A structure already adopted by a number of local councils in our region and across the country, for example, Heverset Parish thousands have recently took exactly a commitment, appointing a standalone RFO which strengthens financial oversight in governments. This will also allow me and the town clerk to focus fully on the crucial work required to progress development and implement the heritage master plan, while the RFO concentrates on maintaining robust financial controls. Is there any questions? Any questions for the council? No? Councilor, second, councilor, all in favour? I think that's fast, thank you. Seventy three twenty five, our review of scheme of delegation. So to receive a minute of change into the terms of reference of the corporate services and community environmental services committees, I like to get the bags, so these are the bags being distributed, I hope everybody wishes to have a look at it, and the decision requires assistance to move the same changes to corporate services and to the community environmental services in terms of reasons.
Oh, look. Sorry. This was noted that this is a money situation, it should really come under corporate services, we look after the finances of the council, and so what we did is we've transferred it into the role of the committee and out of the previous one.
Any questions? No? I look for the common management division myself. Once my permission in terms of any major concern that the corporate services are not finance parts, it's always within the community services committee, and I think because there's so much debt financially, and decision wise, those are the corporate services, it's particularly right, and I was with the vision that it was sort of delegated to this room to decide on the merits of the propositions and the grants, and the people, you know, asking for the grants and support from communities, so I'd much like to see sitting on the current communities it is, but I'm, you know, if there's any other questions or points. No? I think we did a little pause of them for this point.
I would like it to stay with the proposal it was on, to go to, to go with corporate services.
To move the proposal to the council, I'll see, we are, we have a proposal, three on the second of them. I'll see, Jeremy, handles with labour. Now, we are straight, and hopefully they will see us, it's fast. Seventy one twenty five, approval of assets purchased in projects funded by the reserves and grants, with receiving and reviews schedule of assets purchased in projects financed from the reserves and grants, so we need to do with the funding of assets, and in the, so. A step to, so sort of every step work, I suppose.
Madam mayor, every year what we do is we have our expenditure funded from preset, and then we have another set of expenditure which is funded from reserves, from grants, and what we do every year is we formally get that approved by council, the schedule that are attached sets out the spending on assets, in other words, what assets we acquired, all that was approved at individual council meetings throughout the year, some of them were approved in the previous year, and then we have certain projects that we've been working on, I think the one that causes us all to tears is the one outside the front door here, but hopefully that will end soon, which is the repairs to the clock tower and Capola. What we've done is, there was a little bit of carryover from the previous year on the participatory budgeting process, and seven and a half thousand pounds was repurposed from a Brexit council grant to be spent on the screen in the green, which they given us permission to do in writing. So the attached schedule sets out the various reserves that we have, opening balance approved at the last meeting of council, contributions to its budget, which is what we contribute to in the approved budget, the grants received, the spending on assets, the spending on projects, and that gives us our closing balance. And it is this which we have prepared in the financial statements and annual accounts on this particular schedule, so if you don't approve it, I will not see very well tonight.
Anything that matters, councilor?
Thank you, and thank you for the report, Alan, and you know I always get nervous when the town council spends quite a lot of money, and seeing it all in one report obviously brings it home. There's a couple of things in there which I think are absolutely crucial and actually are an investment, I think particularly for me, the purchase of the four new vehicles, the sixty thousand pounds, sixty one thousand pounds there, the town council's been leasing vehicles for quite a number of years now, and at quite a significant cost, so the fact that we now own those vehicles, I think will save money in the long run, they will pay for themselves in no time, so I'm very pleased to see that that's been completed. I haven't seen the vans recently, but hopefully they've got the signage on them now that clearly shows they're Fethford Town Council, so that people know that the team are out and about. And the big one there is obviously the repairs to the clock tower and the gill tour itself here, that's a significant amount of money, it's a frustration, scaffolding is still up, people in the town have noted it's been up for a long while, but this is complicated work, and actually, I don't remember an investment of this size in this building. This building is absolutely iconic for Fethford, it's, you know, people wouldn't forgive us frankly if we didn't invest and make it safe and secure for the future, so although I'm nervous of the size of the money there, and I don't think we really have a choice, so it will stand us in good stead for the future, so very pleased to see the report and happy to support it.
Anyone else? Three, two, one, go. Councilor, it's the end, so I can call you further? It's Gary, thank you. Seventy two AM, here and we turn on this report, so it's to receive a note, the council internal reports for the initial, the first, still the first of March, doesn't matter. And, seventy two AM, please?
Thank you, madam mayor. The report that we prepared sets up a little bit of information regarding the internal audit's purpose and its function. We had a very thorough internal audit, probably one of the most thorough ones that we've had since I've been at the council, we did get a lot of matters raised, you'll see it at the table there, most of them have already been actions by the town clerk, which I'm exceptionally grateful. There is one or two issues, but I think the main point that the internal auditors raised with us is our risk profile in terms of our investments, and we've promised to bring a report to the next council meeting, where we will look at diversing, divesting from the high risk portfolio that we have into, into hopefully just as safe an investment, but a less risky one, and that I think is basically the main issue that the jury public in the losses.
Was we talked on twenty one? Any questions? Because I think, ten second, please? My one, on feeling, it's fast, thank you. Right, we've done it very well, we do have a, basically halfway through, it's busy today. Seventy six twenty five, the annual governance statement for twenty twenty five, so it's to receive the town council's standing on government's statement for the year, and it's the first of March, five, twenty two, that statement, and, empty the clock?
Thank you, madam mayor. What we've done over the last few years is we've developed a process where we can demonstrate to the council, to the internal auditors and to the external auditors, how we've gone through and fulfilled these assertions, and how we point suggests. That work was set out in the internal control documentation that was tabled at the mayor making in early May, and I am confident that what we have stated here, we can support evidence of what we've actually done. So the annual governance statement, I think, is a fair representation, we've checked everything yes, because we do have the proper governance structure in place.
Any comments? Questions? Um, also for that. This is John, ten second, please? This is my phone, I'm feeling, in your this Gary? So seventy seven twenty five, the council statement for twenty four twenty five says three hundred thousand provisions, and going with decisions we had to make today, quite a few, so it's received the council statement for the year, the first of March, twenty five, in total of it, empty the clock, thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. This statement has been prepared in accordance with our accounting records. What was very interesting is we had quite an interesting debate, because it's actually reflective of the reserves of the council, if you have a look at the bottom of the report, it says our balance is brought forward, carried forward from last year to this year with ninety two thousand, and it's carried forward to next year with fifty eight thousand. But that excludes the amount that we've actually have in equity investments, which is about seven hundred and fifty thousand, so that gives you an idea of why the internal auditor has been extremely uncomfortable with this. The, like I say, the accounting statement is in accordance with the accounting records, in my opinion, it's in accordance with the guidance that's issued by the Joint Public Accounting Practices Guide, so again, I commend, and I have signed the statement to demonstrate my own satisfaction that the figure reflects the internal expenditure for the council.
Any questions or comments at this point? No? And we have also, then, councilor, if I can, please? As Gary, thank you very much. So we're at seventy fifty five, financial regulations, so one, list of government decisions, I've seen the updated financial regulations, we have to come with this?
Thank you, madam mayor. A new template has come out, it's just radically different to the old template, there's mixed opinion as to whether it's better or worse than the old template, but it's, we've adopted, we've put it forward for adoption, the changes that we've made, I've listed them down from A to F, we've included a bank mandate, which the preformal ones don't have, we've also identified an internal control council, which I think will help the council fulfil its obligations in terms of legislation, previously we've never had that. The new accounting regulations do not have a quarterly budget monitoring for council, so we've added that, so all the financial reports, at least on a quarterly basis, will come to full council, previously that's never happened. A distinction is made between the budget function from preset to that from reserves, because we've done two separate budgeting processes, and that's reinforced in those regulations. There have been a significant streamlining of the template regulations from a payment of, from bank accounts. Uh, there have been a significant streamlining of the template regulations from a payment, uh, of, uh, from bank accounts. Uh, it seems that, you know, there's more emphasis on petty cash than there is anything else at times. And lastly, a control has been added to the, uh, template of financial regulations. Uh, there's a requirement that the corporate services approves the salary budget, uh, as, as a separate line item. Uh, we don't have any mandatory report on that, so we've added a ten, you know, a report that that will be included on a quarterly basis. Uh, in the, uh, in the month, sorry, in the reporting, reporting to full council. Uh, we have not made any changes to the statutory requirements, so they highlighted in the regulations and they, they have been retained. So I recommend the financial regulations to, for full council to consider.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No? Uh, cleverness. Most of our internal and technical, as well, and as a failure. As carrying, thank you. Seventy-nine hundred and twenty-five, so this is saying, I'm chief, I was standing for present, this is, this is even a date on a renting of the office of King's House. And it's a huge one, it's a good, for my, it's a nice, it's a great one, so I'm going to have to share it with the rest of the country. Uh, we are, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a great, most making comments on this point, if I can make some elements or I will take a break.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as Chair of the Standing Board, we are delegated to put forward recommendations to come forward to the trustee, the town council business trustee. Um, so any, and with agreement, we want to enter into this trustee is the signatory to that agreement. So these are licenses and leases that will come forward as they get reviewed. Um, and we're just asking that the trustee agrees to have them signed and by himself as representing the whole trust.
Okay, to only mean to have a, a joint decision on that, or should not, um, I think you need to approve it for that, so we have to be council, okay? Council journey.
Uh, very pleased to see there's a, uh, new tenant for King's House, it's, uh, been a concern for a while for the council. Um, that the building is empty, I think it reflects, uh, the state of the market, lots of, uh, empty properties around. Uh, but obviously it does have a financial implication for charity. Um, I just wondered, perhaps the, the club and the deputy can advise, is it a legal requirement that it has to be approved by, um, uh, the, the town council as a whole? We delegate to the board of nine individuals to manage, uh, the, the house and the, the gardens on behalf of the town council. And we only meet once a month as a full council. I'd hate to be in a situation where we're not signing up somebody as quick as we possibly could be because we're waiting for a full council meeting. I mean, if somebody arrived in August, they'd have to wait till the end of September because we don't have a August full council, we don't have a December full council. There's nine individuals that meet on a regular basis. Um, can we not look to delegate responsibility or authority to them in the future?
I'm listening, so, so.
Thank you, Kansas and Jeremy. Um, this was a, a discussion point. Um, we felt the board went that, um, we didn't have that delegated authority in place at the moment. Um, it was something that potentially could happen in the future if the council trustee, um, wished that to happen. But at this moment in time, it was felt that we did not have that delegated power, that anything is going forward here. We are asked the pragmatic solution that we're, you know, we're trying to get the leases done so that they can be approved at full council at the end of the month. So they're in place for the first of the month following, um, Deputy Ten Clark may wish to add to it, but I, I think that's where we are and we will bring in. Um, some of the changes, uh, changes to our, um, standing orders for the charity. However, at this point in time, it is still in place that the trustee needs to have or not.
Okay, because we're.
Um, I didn't understand why we, as the town council, cannot give the Stanley Fourth Trust, the trustees there, the delegated responsibility. And that is something that, it just didn't seem reasonable, it didn't happen.
Okay. Okay. Share comments?
Yes, um, I think, uh, what I need to do is speak to Stanley Fourth Clark. I'm sure that if we put it in standing orders, we would be able to give you delegated authority. But we need to put it in standing orders, get out of it, to give you delegated authority. I know it seems long-winded, but everything around council, it's always a bit long-winded. But we, we'll do that in that next council meeting.
Okay, anyone else? In confidence?
Is it safe to assume it's not going to be a big shop or a gambling shop, some kind of?
It's a charity, it's a, I can assure you, in current, um, occupation, we'll not be doing that, um, going forward. And think the board would be, uh, likely to have those type of establishments.
I don't know. Anyone else? No? So should we, to get to make a decision, that is done for the long ways, and all the way, like, we have, who was above. Yes, because, because of, and there is, it was about, as a story, it was in favor, no? Thank you, I'm just carried. Eighteen hundred and twenty-five, general, overall competence, to receive the report with a general volume, G P L C, and to prove the officers' recommendations.
Yeah, one of the items that training, see the auditors report is, um, best practice is that every year. We, um, we look at the genuine power competence. We did adopt it last year, but each year he would like us to just look at whether we still have the power to have, have the genuine power competence. It's just a case of understanding what the legislation stays as, and whether we're happy to accept that we will continue going forward with the genuine power competence.
Okay, maybe that I have a vote as well. So any people's to this or ours? Yes. Um, you also, as well, I'm, 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 I'm bringing up, was those in favor? Thank you, that's carried. Eighty-one hundred and twenty-five, uh, use of the council bill, so to not to use the council's own agreement with their arrangements regarding the use of the marketplace as a very like full council previously. Um, there is a.
Madam Mayor, this is really just the legal requirement that this gets started. Police agreement, uh, was agreed, uh, I think during two thousand, two-three, or certainly early, uh, twenty twenty-four. It has taken such a long time to get that recorded in writing, but it's now done and, uh, uh, seal was used, which you is signing it as man.
Yeah, just to not, I did sign it, oh, that's a very, I need to get a great for it. Okay, I didn't sign, we indeed, we did need to be part of full councils to be able to anyway produce of seal, so to be able to propose. Council journey, please. That's the one, does it fail, no? Thank you very much, that's a big. Okay, so eighty-two twenty-five, I have a solution of less than lovely, to consider the volunteer pursuit of the public authorities, the mission to meeting every nineteen sixteen. The present public base for any remaining items, this is on the ones that publicity even be traditional, the public interest, the public possession nature, obviously to discuss. Thank you very much, all of the ten, very.